Ninth, twenty twenty-three, city council meeting to order. Please stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The next order of business is the oath of office. I will proceed with the oath of office for Mayor and elected council members Luke Merrill and Dan Collison. Upon completion, the mayor will preside over the meeting.
Aye, Luke Merrill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Minnesota.
Of the state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
Of the city of Isani.
Of the city of Isani.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Who raised their hand? Repeat after me.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dan Collison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
To discharge faithfully.
The duties.
The duties.
Of councilmember.
Of councilmember.
Of the city of Isani, Minnesota.
Of the city of Isani, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Over to me now? All right, well, thank you all for coming. Taking roll call, all council members are present. We do have a vacant seat, but. Anyone for public comment? All right, if there's no public comment, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? No modifications, right?
Thank you, Mayor, no there are not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Motion by Collison, or, excuse me, motion by Councilman Merrill and seconded by Councilman Steve Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. And do I have a motion to approve the city council minutes from December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, for the regular meeting of the city council and the December twentieth, twenty twenty-two Committee of the Whole meeting?
Motion adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Lundin, seconded by Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. For announcements, the city offices will be closed Monday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. We have the Committee of the Whole meeting on Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at five P M. We have the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. And the city council meeting on Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. Do we have any council committee reports? And so moving on to the first order of business, resolution declaring a vacancy on the city council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening. So with the council member Jimmy Gordon taking in his seat as the mayor for the city of Isani for his term here, it does leave a vacancy on the city council. For with City Code, Chapter Eight, Article Three, and applicable Minnesota statutes, which sets forth the procedure for filing for the vacancies of the city council. It will be by appointment. So you have before you how it is set for the dates. The dates will be as follows. We'll declare the vacancy this evening. Tomorrow, city staff will post for the vacancy with an application. People who desire that appointment can fill out the application, submit it to the city clerk. The application deadline will be January twenty-seventh. The date for the interview will be posted no later than February third, with the interviews to take place at the city council meeting on February sixth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, next order of business, K two is resolution designating committees and representatives for city commissions and advisory boards for twenty twenty-three. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so we do have some applicants that are here for the Economic Development Authority and the Parks Recreation and Culture Board. We do have one of the applicants who is Dan Henen Camp, who will be moved and postponed his interview to the January seventeenth meeting. But we do have Madison and Arissa. And for Planning Commission. So Mayor, you can pick either Arissa or Madison first, and then you can read the questions to them and interview them before the board.
Okay, sure. Let's see, I got Madison is on the top of the pile here, so let's start there. Hi. Let's see.
Push that, it's gotta be green.
Oh, perfect.
All right. Yeah, well, let's just get right into the questions here. What is the Parks Recreation and Culture Board's role?
To provide oversight to the city parks operations through reviewing and discussing potential projects, input from public, members of the public, as well as discussing budgetary concerns and discussing new opportunities such as grant funding or new like events and activities.
What is your vision of the park and recreational system for the city?
My vision for Isani's park and recreation system is first and foremost to have a safe and accessible park system for all of our citizens to recreate in, as well as offering a diverse amount of activities and events that everybody can participate and come together as a community, as well as being forward-thinking as our city continues to expand and making sure that we continue to keep those natural spaces as well as developed spaces like our traditional parks in mind for all of our residents to enjoy and be able to participate in.
Do you have experience in parks and recreation or park and recreation member experience?
Yes, I served on the Parks Recreation and Culture Board for the past six months, July to December, and I also work for the Minnesota D N R as a cooperative forestry management forester covering the metro counties. And in that job, I work with a lot of cities and county organizations, parks and recreation departments to help connect them with grants and different resources to help manage their forested and natural spaces as well as their urban and community forests.
Do you volunteer within the Isani community?
My volunteer experience has been with the Parks and Recreation and Culture Board, as well as volunteering at illuminate Isani this year. Yeah, that's.
Perfect. Can you attend evening meetings that start at six P M?
Yes.
Any other questions from you guys?
I do have one question. I noticed on your application, there's a spot to check if you're a city of Isani resident or non-resident. I just wanted to check, are you a city resident?
Yep, I have been for two and a half years now.
Any other questions? Any discussion at all?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
I have a question for you, Ms. Wood. If Dan wasn't accepted. Henen Camp, right? That would leave an open seat.
On park board?
Yeah, and nobody else has applied for the park board?
Correct.
I'd be fine if we just accepted it and he doesn't have to come in front. He's already on the board.
He is currently on the Park Recreation Culture Board, that's correct.
And if he's willing to step, go back into it, I'd be willing to accept his application also. Nothing against you, I mean, it'd be nice if he was here, but it just saves another step.
The motion, you could do that.
Thank you. So the rest of the councils are fine with that, I'd make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Yeah, so I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to add Daniel Henen Camp to the Park Recreation and Culture Board and a second by Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, and Arissa. And it was planning, right? Yep, okay. What is the Planning Commission's role?
So the Planning Commission's role is to provide recommendations to the council for approval of projects based on their alignment with a comprehensive plan, zoning code, and any other applicable ordinances.
What is the role of the comprehensive plan in the Planning Commission's decision-making process?
So the comprehensive plan is basically the city's master plan for growth and development, so any decisions that the Planning Commission makes should support the city's vision, mission, and the goals as they're laid out in the comprehensive plan.
Do you feel the current comprehensive plan, do you feel the current comprehensive plan applicable? Does it need to be changed? If so, how?
So yes, it's applicable. Again, it's basically the master plan. Does it need to be changed right now? Probably not, because it was just updated in twenty twenty. And it does get reviewed and updated every ten years. So that ensures that it's applicable to the economical landscape at the time.
What is the purpose of a zoning code? Do you feel there are changes that need to be made?
So zoning codes ensure that residential developments happen in residential areas. Same thing with commercial and commercial areas, industrial and industrial areas. Specifically, no changes need to be made off the top of my head, but that doesn't mean that changes can't be made as needed. So, for example, if you change some of the goals or modify any of the goals in the comprehensive plan, then you may have to modify zoning code too.
If you're asked to make a decision on a matter before you that does not meet city requirements, yet you're in favor of, will you be able to uphold the city's standards?
So in short, yes, I can uphold the city's standards. I am, however, always in favor of making sure that I understand the context for the why and the when a standard was put in place. Sometimes it takes somebody bringing a variance request to us to realize that a city standard is a little bit outdated and that we should look into changing that or modifying it.
What is your knowledge on conditional interim use permits, zoning variances, and plats?
So conditional or interim use permits, as well as variances, are basically exceptions to zoning codes that allow you to use a piece of property in a way that it's not intended to be used or to deviate from a city's standard. For zoning, that's basically just sectioning off different areas of the city to be used for a specific use. And then for plats, it's basically a map of a piece of property. Gives you a bunch of different information, so setbacks, lot size, in the cases of lots that might, or in the cases of plats that might have multiple lots. It's gonna show you how they're laid out.
Do you have planning or planning commissioner experience?
Yeah, been serving on the Planning Commission for the last four years.
Do you volunteer within the Isani community?
So aside from planning commission, not in official, not in an official capacity. I volunteer at the primary school chaperoning for my kids. We're at the B M X track probably about four times a week, so it's highly likely that I'll be volunteering there soon. They wrote me into it, so.
I'd imagine you probably will be. Can you attend evening meetings at six P M?
Yes.
All right, any questions from you guys at all? Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right. So the next one, I guess, that gets to be a little bit more tricky here, so. We've got all these open positions that. I don't know if you guys want to see any changes at all or if you had any things that was kind of a conflict for you, that timing-wise, or if you wanted to take over Paul's spots, or you probably need to have a little discussion on that. I know I can probably cover anywhere that Jeff had been, the previous mayor had been on some of these committee assignments.
I'd make a recommendation to keep everything the same as it is and, you know, Phil Burgley's position. And like you said, to be fair for Luke to take that, take that.
I'm good with that.
Well, go ahead, Dan.
I'm good with that, too.
And I, I mean, for right now, I can take that Cambridge Isani Walk Trail. I already had that before. And if we have somebody that comes on to that vacant spot, maybe we can, you know, fill them in kind of as needed, I guess.
You know, I mean, it's just like the cable TV liaison. I think I went to one meeting in twelve years that I've been here.
Yeah, Councilmember Lundin, it has not been going on, at least in the nine years I've been here.
And then.
Same with the icicle. That's something that sometimes people hope to revive, but I haven't seen it in many years.
What is that?
It's a collaborative group with regional organizations. It could be the school district, it's with the county, it's different cities in the area, all collaborating on bigger efforts that impact the region. It's led by the county or county commissioner, I should say. But in the time I've been here, I've only seen it a couple times.
I don't like the school liaison, I haven't done anything with the school either. But I think I have a couple times, I mean, we've gotta get Luke into some of these other ones, too.
I think for the school liaison, we do have the city staff that get invited to things. Sometimes it's emergency management planning, sometimes it's collaborative efforts on things. We can invite on those, and then it'll be up to the council member who's assigned to it. If they want to attend, if they feel that there's something worthwhile.
I think, I think Mayor Johnson went to court, I think he went to a few of those things.
I think he went to the community education. I'm not sure if he went to the school district that I'm aware of, but.
We, Eddie did.
I mean, it's like, it's never there, I can't go during the day to do that stuff anyway, so. I don't know if Luke can or not.
Was that the school liaison?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could probably do that.
You can put him in that position.
Sure.
And like I said, the cable TV, I think I went there once.
Are you saying to, you're saying to have him be instead of you in that spot?
Yes.
Okay, so he would be the alternate for, okay.
Yeah. You know, and I, I don't know, Mr. Burgley, if he, I don't know how many chamber commerce meetings he went to.
I do attend the chamber meetings regularly as well as Ms. Wood at times. But I think it would be great if we could have a representative attend, if you're willing and able.
Is that something you're interested in?
Yeah, I should be able to.
Yeah, I mean, it's. I think those are usually, one of those usually happen time of day.
Lunchtime usually, noon to one.
And how often is that?
Once a month.
Okay.
We do send staff to that once, man, I don't think it's something that you had to make every meeting or anything like that, so.
But if you can break free, it's, I guess it's good camaraderie in there.
Jimmy, if you, have you done the C I bike walk trail stuff?
It's once, basically once a year right now is.
Okay.
So, and it's usually January, I think, it's coming up probably fairly soon.
Correct, I think it's like the fourth Monday in January.
Yeah, I think I went to one of them.
Yeah, you filled in for me one time when I was out in Wisconsin, I think, yeah.
Well, if you don't want the responsibility, I can take that, because the county park board already does stuff with the bike and walking trail. So it would fit with me if you, sure.
And then I don't know, your alternate for the fire district. That's kind of a.
Maybe it should be something different.
He's one of those two.
Yeah, yeah, you're probably right about that.
And I think that was the only reason it was, he wanted to be part of that. It could, you can look at it two ways. You are a fireman, so it could be considered a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather not have to probably sit on the board and make those kind of decisions with.
And I, and you've seen the last, this last couple months with me hitting miss with council meetings. I mean, if somebody doesn't have heat, I gotta put a furnace in. Their heat at this time of year is my livelihood, so. One of these two guys, if they want to be part of that.
If you want, you can put me down for an alternate. You want to do that, okay. Those are evenings.
Yeah.
I think it's Wednesday.
It's the third Wednesday of the month. And I think what is this, this month, this meeting is at Station One, I believe, but I should be there. I should be there, but.
And can we change this at any time throughout the year, just with the amendment?
That is correct.
Okay, so if we get someone on that wants to participate, we can change that?
We will bring this back when we have another council member join.
Okay.
And we do have the park wreck and culture alternate, if you want an alternate listed.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna be the alternate?
Sure, yeah.
I think, I think Mayor Johnson was at all many of them, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I suppose I can't be the main person in the alternate, can I?
Yeah.
And then with that, if we're an alternate, we just communicate with the primary person or the primary person communicates with the alternate?
Yeah, so if I couldn't make it, then I would let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I mean, if you don't want to do the parking wreck, I mean.
No, I'm fine doing it.
You know, I mean, that's, you know, I do know, you run your own business and sometimes it's not easy to get away either.
Well, I mean, I mean, Luke's around too, so I mean, if I can't make it for some reason, then I'm sure he'll help me out if I, if I need him, but. But yeah, I mean, I might as well, might as well take as many of those as I can, so. I don't know, anything else on there that?
Mayor pro temp?
Oh, yeah, okay, sure. So that, you know, Steve, I know you've been on the longest and you've done mayor pro temp before, and, you know, is that something that you'd want to continue to do?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. The longest. I've been here probably longer than all you've been all here together. Yeah, no, no problem.
Okay.
Are we still looking for an open seat for parking wreck from a student?
Yes, we still do have the student representative seat open.
Well, if any of you guys got a student that would be interested in that, please. Good education.
Is that any of your student, does that include college too, or is that just under eighteen?
I think it's under, it's in city code, I think it's under eighteen to be that student seat. Yep, it's meant to be a high school student. But if you had a college student who wanted to do it that lived in town or was primarily residential in town, they could apply for the open seat.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, I mean, sometimes college kids don't have little school kids. It'd be just nice to have everything filled, that's all. That's, that's why I brought up Dan's deal. Not to break in procedure, but if there was other people applying for that position, I can understand that. Without, let's keep that seat filled.
Yeah. And then as far as Economic Development Authority, we really have two open seats on that now, right?
Correct, we'll have two open seats.
Actually, three, really. Totally fill that vacant spot, okay. So, yeah, I mean, if there's anybody out there that wants to do that. And you took notes on all that stuff, you said, right? So, yeah, okay. So do we have a motion then to approve all of those appointments and? We need a motion for that?
My motion, we make the current changes that we discussed for. Yeah. He knows what I was talking about.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
You know, we got an old council member up there could serve on the E D A board.
Yeah.
He's now a resident.
Wink, wink.
I had a, yeah, I feel like, I feel like we had a conversation about that, yeah. Let's see, next we have K three designating an official newspaper appointing depositories and professional services.
Thank you, Mayor. So annually, we do make some designations here at the beginning of the year. One of them is for our official city newspaper. In this resolution before you, is the Isani Shisago County Star that has been recommended by staff. They have agreed to continue their services at the same rate of twenty twenty-two. This was also discussed at Committee of the Whole in comparison to the other newspaper that we have and the circulation that they have. We also have depositories listed as Falcon National Bank, R B C Wealth Management, and Open Heimarin Company. Our city attorneys is Ratwick, Rozak, and Maloney. Benefit Consulting Services is N F P. Prosecuting Attorney Services is G D O Law. Our city engineer is Bolton and Mink. City auditor is Abdo. Financial advisor is Northland Securities, Inc., and our bond counsel is Taft, Stutness, and Hollister.
Any discussion on, on those appointments at all?
So I have a question on that, so is this the minimum requirements for, like, legal, where we post about openings and public hearings and all that? Is that what this is for in the paper? Okay.
So we're, Councilmember Merrill, we're required to post our public notices, hearings, all those in, in, in official newspaper. So this would be designated for that one. So then our residents and the public know where to look.
I'll make a motion to approve.
If I, if I could just kind of make a mention, too, you know, we've used the Star in the past here and, and, you know, some of the government entities kind of around the area have kind of made a point to pick on, on the Star a little bit. And I just wanted to take a second to, you know, even on our council before, we've, we've kind of picked on the Star a little bit, too. But I wanted to make a point to just, you know, editor, Bill Stickles there, he's always, I think, treated us fairly when he covers our council meetings. And I think some of his opinion pieces, I definitely don't agree with a lot of what he thinks in his opinion pieces, but, but I do want to say that I think he's always covered the news fairly, and opinion is opinion. And I think he's, he deserves to be commended a little bit for having the guts to put his opinion out there. You know, and I know that that's, it's hard to do that sometimes, and I wanted to thank him for, for doing that and for giving us a fair coverage on our, our council meetings as well. And John has done a good job at the County News Review, but I think, and I know they said they would probably put us in the Scotsman, I think, as well, but I think with the Star, that gives us the, the circulation, you know, that, that we need, where people are really going to read the news. And so I think that's, that's why we made that decision, but, but Luke has a motion to make the approval.
I'll second.
So I have a motion to approve by Councilman Merrill and a second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. And then the next order of business is K four, streaming meeting live discussion. And that was kind of my, my idea to look into this, and I, we had talked about it, you know, years ago, and I know that we had kind of gone away from it, and we do post our meetings on YouTube. But I really want as many people as possible to have access to the information that we're talking about and be able to stay up to speed on, on what we're doing. And I know that, that Luke, that was one thing that you were real passionate about as well, and. So I, I really wanted to kind of dig in and see if we were to do meetings on Facebook Live as well as posting them on YouTube, you know, a couple of days later, but, but I think there's other communities, it sounds like, that do that in the area, and, and I know that we, you guys had some meetings, I think, this past week about, you know, what would be the best way to go about that and if it was a possibility to do it, so.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor Gordon. So Ms. Strand and myself, we did some work and research on this and how we can utilize the. utilize the equipment that we have for AV here with the cameras, so we have a good angle and we can stream them live and not not just stream them live, but stream them live well, um, in a format that's gonna be, um, good for the viewer to be able to see, and we were excited that it won't take too much. It does have a little bit of a cost, but the best avenue, and we tested it, so if any of the public was getting notifications from YouTube or Facebook, we had some test videos and then we quickly deleted it, and then we made another one and then we deleted it. Um, so we were messing around with that, and we were excited that we were able to stream it very well on YouTube and then push it out on Facebook, so they will do live at the same time. Um, talking to our AV, um, technology people, they recommend doing it that way versus just doing Facebook Live because of the users' end result of how they can view it and the multiple platforms. Um, it has better resolutions, more reliable, um, it's more of a professional platform on YouTube to push it out on first. So we feel confident that we can hit both streaming services and do it very well. Uh, the equipment, we would use what we have and with our camera, um, it would take a little bit of hardware. We have a digital links DL, um, which is allowing us to connect some cabling that we need back there, making sure that we also have our internet, um, hardcoded into it. Or hard hard adapted into it, not doing over wifi, so we get that, um, no breaks in service as we've all had when we were doing Zoom there for a little bit, and sometimes it just dropped people, so we wanna make sure that we don't have that happening. There is, um, some other cables that are required, some other hardware and labor, and the grand price for all of it, including the training and the implementation into our main brain, so to say, of our equipment here, comes to two thousand eight hundred and seventy-four. That would be an unbudgeted expense, but we would use technology fund out of six fourteen to pay for those costs.
So I do have one question on this. Um, is there any way that we could possibly make that like interactive? I know there's always comments and stuff. Would it be possible for us to see the comments? Like almost like a public input? I know it's not exactly professional, but sometimes it's good for people to see what everybody's thinking, because we usually don't have an audience here to contribute anything, so it's. I think that'd be cool if we could see the comments as they come in.
So we would, uh, connect a monitor here for staff to see, so we can see what the audience is seeing as it's being streamed. Um, and typically I see that comments are turned off on cities, but there are comments available, and I think that if we wanted, if the council desired that you wanted staff to let you know when there was a comment or a question posted, if it's something you want us to answer, we could an try to answer it live. If it's something that you want to presented to you at the time of the item, if that's what council desired, we could certainly do that.
So how would that work? I mean, would we, because usually if they have public comment, they have to come up and, you know, give their name and address and that kind of thing. I mean, if we had a comment from Facebook, I mean, is that something that we can really put into the meeting, I guess? I mean, that's.
It would have to be read out loud.
Yeah, it'd have to be read out loud. They also have to state their name and their address. Um, I think it would, we'd have to look into a little bit more, but off the cuff, I think I would consider that to be more like a written comment. Um, where, but they still have to provide their information to be noted on the record if we want to include it as part of the meeting.
Okay.
Um, I'd also have to look to see if there was something in city code chapter eight which talks about the eligibility to be or like when we allow it for public comment, if that had to be amended to include that, or maybe we could do it by policy, by resolution, I have to look into that a little bit more. I'm not aware of any cities that do that, so theoretically it can be done, but.
Stay steer away from that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that might get to be a little bit.
Problem. You know, everything has to be crystal clear, and if.
With all the fake profiles.
Fake profiles and everything else. I I think the comments should be shut off. I think it, I think the people generally that would be, if you're gonna comment about something that's being discussed, you probably should be here.
They can also get the minute, the or the agenda beforehand and decide whether they should be here in person or not, or or reach out to one of the council members or the mayor.
Yeah. Cause I know you said Malacca, I think it was, right, that does it now?
Malacca's doing Facebook Live.
Okay.
I mean, they're not doing it on their YouTube anymore, but.
They are doing the Facebook Live, and I think you said the other day you checked into it and they had like seventy-six people watching the.
The Truth and Taxation Meeting had seventy-six views.
So I mean, that's
Yep.
An awful lot of people. I mean, we were packed in here that night, but I'm sure we didn't have seventy-six, uh, people in here, so.
I mean, I I understand the technically speaking aspect of it, but I don't know if we could sit here as individual council members and just see the comments potentially, and then you don't necessarily have to read the comment aloud, but you could add your opinion on that related to that comment if you thought it was important.
But then you'd be lying in that opinion without the rest of us knowing what's being said. I I just think I think it's best to stay clear of it. I think we're finding ourselves in less legal ramifications.
But we might.
It's an open meeting. I mean, it's, you know, everything has to be public record, and when you start doing that, you're eliminating that possibility for public record.
But I think you're also opening up for the community to be involved. So it's.
If they really wanna be involved, they'll.
They'll come here.
They'll come here.
You're giving them, you're giving them a live video.
Or they'll reach out.
You're giving them live, they could see it firsthand and not seeing it two days down the road.
Okay, I think it'd be worth looking into potentially, but I understand what you're saying too.
I think we can always introduce it. Let's keep it maybe more simple to at first and introduce it without the comments, and then I think down the road, we can try to, you know, maybe we can can sort of look into implementing that in the future too.
See if there's any other municipalities that.
Yeah, all right, see how they're handling it.
Could be legal reasons why they don't. Maybe that's why we don't see it.
Yeah, right, right.
We can definitely look into it.
Sure.
Just the world's a changing place, and I think people are less likely to come to meetings nowadays, so it's just another avenue.
Yeah, I just think it's something that that people are using it, and I think, you know, we wanna be as transparent as possible and get the word out to as many people as possible of what's, you know, what changes are happening and what's being done, and you know, we want their, we wanted to be informed and and, um, you know, know what's going on, so.
I've been just, um, previous experience with when during COVID, when we did our Zoom meetings, the people that would come on and be live said some foul language remarks and stuff that, you know, that's what I would be afraid of.
Yeah, right, and the and that's Facebook Live, they can't, they can't talk back to you or anything like that, but.
Kids are watching along with their parents, maybe, things like that. I just.
I think we just best try and just let it be livestreamed and and I think.
And that's that's better than what we've done in the past.
Absolutely. I don't disagree with running it live, so.
Okay.
So I make a motion, we move forward, uh, with spending the two thousand dollars plus minus whatever for the expenditures to go live.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Uh, K five, reducing general fund expenditures to reduce taxes. This one, this one was another one that I kinda wanted to bring up, and you know, I mean, I wanted to get started right away. I mean, making, you know, trying to reduce taxes was something that that was a big campaign promise and something that I really ran on hard, and you know, I wanted to kinda get the discussion going, you know, right off the bat, so. I mean, Mike, I mean, you and I have kinda had conversations before as far as, you know, what's our largest expense, uh, in the in the general fund and, you know, what, you know, what can we do about that, I guess?
Yeah, the the first thing to understand is that in the general fund, it for the twenty for the twenty twenty-three budget, you're looking at somewhere around seventy percent of the entire budget is labor. Whether it's wages, benefits, that type of thing, seventy percent is is labor. That's the big deal. Uh, if you look back historically, um, you know, there were years back where you maybe got into the upper fifties, into that sixty range. A good chunk of that is because prior to prior to twenty nineteen, uh, we accounted for general fund capital expenditures in the general fund. Now we do that in sister fund nine twenty. So that would float those total expenditures up and dilute the labor part. But now when we take those capital expenditures and set those aside, have those funding, that funding separate, and you're just looking at just the operations, not the capital needs associated, yeah. Right about seven, right around seventy percent for twenty twenty-three is is labor. So it's hard to, it's hard to consider too many cuts that don't address that elephant in the room.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, that being said, I mean, I think our, you know, where can we look, I guess? I mean, is it, you know, I know our police budget is has gone kinda through the roof here in recent years. I mean, a sixty-seven percent increase over the last five years, and, you know, it's a million dollars more. Uh, we were spending a little bit over a million previous to this, and over the last five years, that's grown to be over two million. You know, I mean, is that, is that something that, you know, we can dig into, and I maybe that's a question for Travis, I guess, you know, I mean, too, is it? You know, I know we've asked you to staff a lot of hours, and, you know, when we're looking at that, I mean, is there ways where we can be more efficient, and I know we've got, you know, the reason I wanted to bring that up now too is I know we've got two open positions now, and so if we are gonna make changes to staffing, it's easier to make it before we hire people, obviously, than it is after, and then try to lay people off, and so I thought maybe now was the time to to look at it, but.
I mean, just in the last five years, I mean, this last year, we had ten thousand three hundred fifteen calls for service, and five years ago, it was eight thousand, so we're up at two thousand calls. Um, so I don't think now is a time to discuss defunding the police. I think that would be a detriment to our community.
I didn't ask for defunding the police, that's not what I'm, I'm saying just hours.
Cutting officers is, that's what you're talking about. Be the wrong time. We're still, we have a resignation on the agenda today, and part of that is some of the mandatory overtime we've been pushing because we're short. And it's not the whole reason, but that's part of it. I have fear that you'll see more of that if we still stay understaffed. We're going through a process right now and actually have two candidates that we interviewed that are possibilities good. We've gone through three processes and haven't hired anybody because we're getting five, four, five applicants at a time, so, I mean, we are running, I know I presented our s- those numbers as far as our response times, I don't know, a few months ago, and we can go over that again. So even at our staffing level now, under ideal circumstances, we'd have two officers on from four PM to four AM. Granted, right now, we're a little short. We're filling some of those. Then we're running single officers from four AM to four PM. That doesn't take in the consideration the training, vacation, sick in those hours, which I can't recall we came up with what that officer number was, but that's quite a significant. Is it three, four hundred hours an officer? So take those night officers, that's eight hundred sixteen hundred hour, uh, sixteen hundred hours out of that. So it's almost equivalent to a full-time person that's gone, you know, on the. So even with wanting to have two people on, you know, it was council's direction at last year's meeting. Even at our staffing level, once we, you know, fill these two vacancies, we won't be at that all the time, you know, eighty percent of the time maybe. Which then increases our response times to that five minutes waiting for the county for backup.
And I guess, I mean, that was that was kinda my my point, I guess, is that, you know, we've asked you to cover those shifts. We didn't do that prior to that, you know, and so, you know, and I think that's the reason that we've seen such a huge increase, and I'm not trying to defund the police. I mean, that's not at all what I'm talking about. I think the most important thing we do as a city is is the police work. I mean, that is absolutely the most important thing we do is keeping our residents safe. And but I mean, anytime you have any budget item that's sixty-seven percent increase, when everything else has gone up not nearly that fast, it's like, well, what, you know, what's the reason for that? And I guess that's.
Squad cars too. Five years ago, we probably get an outfitted squad for fifty grand. Now you're talking seventy, seventy-five grand. Inflation on all their tools that they need to do their job.
Right.
That's, they've gone through the roof.
Yeah, no, I agree with you there for sure, but I mean, that's still, and we're talking about a million dollars of an increase over over five years. I mean, that's just a huge amount of money. I mean, you know, my thought is that we've asked them to cover, I mean, prior to that, you know, I don't know when we started making that change where we did two officers on over every evening is what you're trying to do, and that's why you have a lot of mandatory overtime too, right, is because you're you're trying to split all these guys, you know, across all these hours.
We're only trying to fill Fridays and Saturdays with overtime, so right now, we have one officer covering the city by Iceni. If one of the residents has a high priority call where somebody's trying to break in and harm them, our officer will probably wait for a deputy to show up. Could be sitting thirty seconds out. Instead, we're waiting six, seven minutes, depending on when the sheriff shows up. So if that is the type of safety you wanna give your community, that's your choice, you know, we're dealing with what we can deal with. I can't mandate that officer because of where we're trained to go into this by themselves. They can, if they feel comfortable, but we have to rely on the county, which is how we're dealing with it. So when we have two officers on, that was the direction the council wanted. We have a lot better response time to help at least keep that safety protocol going.
So I do have a question on this. So you said, uh, the number of calls went from roughly eight thousand, roughly ten thousand in the last five years, so that's a twenty-five percent increase. So I think what Jimmy's asking is, you know, in the last five years, we've seen a sixty-seven percent increase in funding with only a twenty-five percent increase in calls. Is there, I think what he's trying to get at is maybe there's areas that we can spend a little less. I know the county at one of their last meetings, they approved a six hundred fifty dollar red dot, uh, sites for all their handguns, when realistically you could get away with a three hundred dollar red dot, cut the price in half. So I don't know if you guys are doing things like that where it's, you're spending money on maybe the the Rolls Royce of everything versus when you could get a Toyota that's gonna work just as good and get you through the day. So I don't know.
Our discretionary spending, I think Mike can correct, I think is eleven, twelve percent. It would be like, what, uniforms are paying officers, stuff like that. So there are private, you know, if you wanna cut a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars out of that, it wouldn't have as much. I mean, wages is is huge. I'm sure if Mike ran the numbers from five years ago, what we were paying out per officer to, and I know you were just on the labor committee, you just gave a wage adjustment plus COLA. That's a significant increase these officers are getting from even last year that you approved on that committee. If you extrapolate that over ten officers, um, I think it was around a hundred thousand dollars or even more plus overtime, right? So that's a big chunk of that time, and that was just one year, so go back five years and add those up. So I think that's where a lot of that money's coming from, is the wage changes over those those years. The other thing, um, I don't know if Mike explained what our workman's comp insurance premium, he probably knows the numbers, were you like forty thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in that time?
Right, and I'm not saying that I wouldn't expect it to go up, and I and I don't fault you, I mean, you're doing what the council instructed you to do, and so I I think you're doing a great job. I mean, it's it's hard work to try to staff and and to try to staff to the levels that we've asked you to staff to is is a huge, you know, a huge undertaking, so, you know, I mean, and then it it's the evening stuff, I mean, I think that's part of it, but then in the daytime, you know, we've got, you know, the chief, we've got you on, we've got the lieutenant, we've got the investigator, we've got a patrol man, so we've got four people covering the daytimes, and maybe I'm not totally right about that, but that's from my my perspective, I'm from the outside looking in, you know, I mean, do we need that extra patrol man when we've already got three guys that are doing their job? You know, can we kinda take some of those calls? And I know some of that increase in calls, you know, it's twenty-three hundred more calls over the five years, but a lot of that is also medical calls too, you know, so it's not all like emergency, you gotta, you know, hurry up and get there kinda stuff. I mean, some of it maybe are calls that we just take as information that we don't even actually go to because we already have fire and we already have the ambulance going to a lot of those type of calls where it's not necessary for it to always be there, you know, so I mean, in the daytime, I mean, are there, I mean, is there the possibility that we can, and that's all I'm asking. I'm not really asking to go into details here right now. I'm just asking the council to maybe say, well, let's let's not hire for those two positions now, and let's take a few weeks just to have, you know, Travis and and, you know, the other city staff members kinda work and see, I mean, is there ways that we can cover more of these shifts and and do a great job still, but be more efficient, you know, so.
As far as the daytime, I mean, if we didn't have a patrol officer, then we would notify our community that our police response is only when they call. We won't have active patrol. So there will be no police officers in your neighborhood driving around during the day, looking for criminal activity, making you feel safe, which is, I think, more important of our job than catching the criminal, but that would be what we would lose every day. So you don't have that from four PM to four AM. And again, I think that'd be doing a disservice to this community immensely. That'd be be not a good thing. So I don't think staffing is the piece to look at. I mean, we can look at other pieces of that puzzle and see, but as Mike says, you know, staffing numbers a big percentage, we can look at that eleven percent and see what we can whittle off that eleven percent. At the end of the day, I don't, you know, we can see what we can come up with on the eleven percent of our budget.
And I do wanna give a big thanks to the PD. Um, I personally like seeing them driving around and knowing the community is safe. You know, I get done working at three or four in the morning, and it seems like once a week I see a cop driving by my house, and I like seeing that. I think it keeps the community safer, and I think the residents appr- appreciate that too. Uh, I know on the consent agenda, there was Pump Republic, and they had donated three hundred dollars to PD, and, um, he had made that a mission of his when he came into town to make that donation, so clearly he appreciates the PD as well, and I wanna thank him for that and the PD, so. I I just think if there's a way that we can somehow whittle something away just to make a little bit of a difference, I mean, every dollar counts. Like I said, with the red dots and stuff that the county did, I thought that was kind of egregious spending, and if there's anything like that, maybe it's not staffing, but I think it's a good thing to look at if we can, so.
I don't disagree that eliminating some expenditures, but by co- asking them to step down, that you know, try to look at reofficer and changing that that look. There's also a thing called burnout. And that's probably why this other officer is resigning. He's burned out putting in hours. You ask the city staff to cut something, and then somebody else is picking up that slack, and now they're gonna get burned out. It's gonna end up costing us more and more and more. It's not just, it's not just the squad cars costing more. It's not just the. It's not just, it's not just the squad cars costing more. It's not just the labor that's costing us more. Everything you do today costs you more money than it did last year. Everything you do today costs ten times to twenty-five times more than it did five years ago. Go buy a dozen eggs. What were they two weeks ago? What are they today? It's ridiculous. It's cost of living. We're not gonna change that. We're not, we're not, we're not, there's nothing you or I or anybody can do in here. I know that you're very passionate about cutting taxes, but if you really want to make a difference to these people in the city of I C A N taxes. You've already cut it eleven percent. Go to the county and lobby for them to start dropping that tax and the school tax. That's where it's gonna matter. What we do in this little area and we've already cut eleven percent of the taxes, that's where it needs to be cut. Cause that little eleven percent that we, that the city of I C A N that you cut, isn't gonna change what the county's getting.
I don't disagree with you there.
That's, if you really want to do something, that is where you need to go. And I, and I, and I don't think by going to the staff and asking them to cut hours or cut people. We can always look at small expenditures, but it's the two thousand dollars that we're just spending now to upgrade this so we can go live. That's something you want. You want to cut tax? Let's cut out that two thousand dollar expenditure. You want to cut something else, cut down something else that you want to see done, that's gonna cost us money. Do we want to cut out snow plowing? Hey, public work has no, they have nothing to do with how much it's gonna snow. And when, they've already moved more snow now than they did almost all of last winter. And we're still got two or three months of that snow to move.
Yeah, that's, that is true, but it's our responsibility as council members to try and keep the city running lean.
But what I'm saying is, where do you want to cut, Luke?
Right.
How do you want to do that?
And that's why we're talking about it.
Say to the public works or say to the police department, I don't want you patrolling tonight. Take the night off. How is these people sitting out in this audience gonna feel when they know there's no police officer?
That's not, that's not.
Crime has gone up. And what I'm trying to get is what you, what you want, you're asking him to do is cut back an officer during the day. What, when crime goes up seventy percent in the last two, last three years, three years, seventy percent crime rate. It's gone up across the board.
But hasn't tonight's A N E gone up that much?
It, it's gone up a lot more than you think. I tell you what, I've had people. But if it wasn't for my neighbors across the street, I wouldn't know these people are digging around in my yard. Had no business during the middle of the day. I had to go buy security cameras so I know who's dinking around in my house. And it wasn't cheap. And I gotta pay for that service. That's what I gotta do. Because they can't be at every single street every ten minutes. It ain't gonna happen. I don't care if they put ten officers on. They would still never be able to do it. Then you got some guy that's whipping up and down Main Street at eighty miles an hour. They can't be there to catch it, but somebody's gonna call them and let them know that they're doing it. But if you have no officers to do it, what are you gonna do? You go, if then you want to say, I want to go to public works. They're doing what they can in hours that they have. You go up to the staff. That staff's still pretty darn lean compared to what it used to be years ago.
That's true.
So if you go to Ms. Woods and say, I need you to eliminate a position in there, who's gonna fill that, what that person was doing in that job? She's probably gonna do it. And there's gonna be a, come at some point, I don't care if she's on salary or if she's on hourly rate. She's gonna get burned out and you're not gonna get anybody to replace her. You, I'm telling you, you want to cut taxes. You want to do something. You need to go up to the courthouse up here and argue with this county. And quit increasing your taxes twenty-five percent. Then go on the other side, go to the school district and say, it's time that we stop having my school taxes go up. When this guy sat here two years ago and came in here and says, your taxes are only gonna go up a hundred and twenty dollars on your house. Mine went up four hundred just for the school loan. And my house was in that property value that they were stating. You want, you want to do something, that's where you gotta start with it. It's the forty percent that the county is collecting for school district and the county alone, not the city by Sandy's portion of it. That's, that, I, I, I think you're, you're gonna, you're gonna, you, you say you want to cut an officer. I guarantee you, you're gonna have four hundred people calling you.
I never said I wanted to cut an officer. I said I wanted to look at.
Well, I'm just telling you right now, like, I would not, I would not, been on this council for as long as I have. I would never sanction anything like that, cutting any staff unless it's absolutely positively necessary. And i- is there, like I said, I brought it up, that two thousand dollars you just spent tonight. That's two thousand dollars. Give you that up to the rest of the, the rest of the community. How much is that gonna cost them?
Three dollars a resident.
Three dollars a resident, but that's three dollars less that they gotta pay in taxes, right?
I mean, there's other projects that are.
What I'm just saying is, you want to start cutting some of these things, you need, like, first place, you really want to be a hero to your residents that voted for you. Get up to the county and start fighting them. That's gonna make a big difference. When my taxes increase because of the county tax levies that go up on every single year, it's ridiculous. My taxes are almost four thousand dollars a month in my little house. Or a year, I shouldn't say month, pardon me, a year. Four thousand dollars a year. When I first moved in there three years ago, there were eighteen hundred dollars. That's doubled. And it wasn't because of the city's portion, it was because of county and school board.
Yeah, but that's kind of a problem with government. You can't always push it off on everybody else. We're doing our job here as best we can.
And yeah, it's like, what did I just say, Luke? You just cut it eleven percent. Out of fourteen percent tax, what we collect from the county, you drop eleven percent. But the county's not gonna drop that. They're gonna stay at that level, trust me. And every single year, you have to look at your property value. What is it increased from the year before? I don't care if you didn't raise, if you rate, didn't rate, you left the tax rate at zero. Your property increased ninety thousand dollars. You're paying more in taxes automatically. And I don't think a lot of people understand that. Your property value increases, your taxes increase. No matter if you went zero or not. You're still gonna increase the tax value. And your property isn't gonna decrease in value. I mean, you, I honestly, you really want to do something with that, you need to get up to where all the rest of those taxes are coming from these people. Yes, when you live in I C A N, you do pay more in taxes than a resident in the county does, automatically. That's to pay for street sweeping, our police department, the fire department, everything down the line. You automatically are gonna have that. You know that when you live in town. But to control that tax level, it needs to start at the counties instead of bringing this up twenty percent, eighteen percent. School at eighteen, fifteen, twenty percent. I haven't had a kid in school for thirty years and I've been paying taxes for that school up there for thirty more years. And I haven't had a kid in that school. There's pit, there's plenty of parents that don't have children in the school and they go to a private school because they don't trust their local school district. That are paying for both. That's wrong. That's where it needs to change.
I would agree. I, I mean, I think as.
I, I understand what you're talking about, to drop things here and there. But when you were talking to him, I, but I'll tell you what I exactly got out of it. You wanted him to cut officers and not hire anymore. That's exactly what I heard from you.
That's not what I said.
Mayor Gordon, that's exactly what I heard.
Well, that's what you heard, but that's.
And that's what ninety percent of the perception is gonna be. Luke said to cut out the red dots. I got that portion. That expenditures money is that way. But I, you just cannot go out and start slashing things. And drop another five, ten percent. And then all of a sudden, now we're trying to play catch up. And now you're gonna have a special assessment to people. It, it just ain't gonna work. When they see a special assessment, they, they're, they're gonna throw their arms in there. I, I understand, I know exactly what you want to do, but I'm gonna tell you what I got out of that conversation. You wanted him not to hire those two officers and you said, let's back off and wait with hiring them. I did hear you.
You said, yeah, that's right.
But by stating that, now you're taking public safety to another level. It's not gonna be a, it's not gonna be a good outcome for anybody sitting up here.
Let me first say that I plan on turning over every rock looking for ways to save taxes. And so I'm jumping on the most difficult one right now because it is obviously a tough conversation. Nobody wants to defund the police, right? I mean, and that's not what I'm trying to do here. And I, and I, like I said, I feel that this is the most important thing that we deal with is, is policing. And, and, uh, you know, making sure that our citizens are safe. I don't disagree with that at all. But, but we've got to look at everything. And so this is the, the hardest one to look at. And that's why I wanted to get it, you know, first. And just to look at it, I'm not saying not to ever hire those people. I'm just saying, I'd like to wait a few weeks so we can have time to look at it and see. I mean, maybe it's not, you know, cutting actual staff positions. Maybe it's just taking it and taking it instead of the twelve-hour shift, it's a ten-hour shift where they, they, you know. One starts at four, one starts at six and one gets done at, you know, two and one gets done at four, something like that. So it's not, you know, maybe it's cutting a couple hours here and cutting, cutting a couple hours there. I mean, and it's, and maybe in the daytime, it's not all day. Maybe it's part of the busy part of the day or something. I mean, I don't know. I'm not a police officer. I don't, I don't pretend to know everything. That's why I'm asking you the questions. And that's why Travis has been gracious enough to, to answer them. And, and I, I respect Travis's opinion and his experience immensely. But I just think that it would be wise for us to say, any department, I mean, all of the departments really, but this is the one that's increased the most. That's why I just want to take a pause and just say, hey, let's take a few weeks, let's look at it, let's study it. Let's see if, if, if Travis and the city staff can work together and find ways to where, you know, how can we, you know, maybe save money here and save money there? And I think to your point about the, you know, wages and stuff being the major part of it, I think that is the, you know, I think we talked, it was like eighty-seven percent, right? Was of the budget was wages. And, and it's absolutely true that work comp has gone through the roof with all the things that have been going on. And it's, and it's true that we've raised, you know, payroll and it's true that we've done lateral hiring. So I mean, there's a lot of reasons why. And we've got great police department, you know, great police officers because of those things. But I just want to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible. And that's all I'm asking for. It's not that we're gonna for sure not hire people or do anything like that. It's just, can we take a few weeks to take a pause? And we have, like I said, two open slots for now. If we wait three weeks or so, I mean, let's take a pause and just see if we can find ways to, to cut there, so.
We are in the middle of the process. We're background and psychological on candidates. So if we push this out for two weeks, we recruited candidates that we wanted. We've gone through three process, well, four processes, hired one, right? So I guarantee you that if we push this out, maybe you'll get your wish. We won't hire anybody because we won't get.
I didn't say that was my wish. I said I wanted to look at it.
We won't get anybody to apply. Because we recruited two people to apply that have experience, not a lot, just one year. And if we go back and say, you know what, by the way, just kidding, it's not gonna work. And then you're gonna have more resignations coming across because our guys are burned out. I mean, you, we were, I told my guys to do their best to recruit the best candidates we can. That's why we didn't hire through three, all last, we went through three processes, two months apart. Didn't hire anybody because we weren't just gonna hire to fill a spot. We need a certain person that we can trust to actually protect our community. Now we're in the middle of this process, but so by cutting this process. That it'll be detrimental not only for these candidates we're pulling in, but we're gonna have more burnout, we're gonna have more people leaving. Um, it's gonna be indicative to the, uh, employees to see that they're not being supported by council. And it's, we have a great thing going as far as, we are the agency in the county as far as reputation. Uh, people are coming to us. We're hiring people from Cambridge, we're hiring officers from the county. I'd hate to see that get, uh, lost. Because once you lose it, you know, it took three years to get it, to be that agency that everybody wants to work for, which gets you. And right now, we've discussed this every time I've discussed that the biggest challenge I have is recruitment. Because we were getting sixty applicants, I think we're up to four, include, but two that were recruited. So, uh, Lakes area, Shasago, they got one applicant. That's the biggest challenge. So the fact that once we start losing officers, I don't know what the answer's gonna be.
You know, and I would make the argument too, I mean, you mentioned about the county. You know, we, all of our residents also pay county taxes. So I mean, they've got a sheriff's office that all of our residents have just as much of a right to depend on some of that service as well. And maybe you're right, maybe it is, we go to the, the county and, and, you know, push for, for more coverage and, you know, more officers in that area too. But, um, I don't know.
I think it's important as council members and leaders to sort of lead your community, right? So why can't we as a city council, think about these things and talk about these things, maybe as an example to the county? Saying maybe you county commissioners can consider the same type of approach where you actually look at things and talk about things and don't just sweep them under the rug. And say you have to spend this money because you never do have to spend the money. Um, like I said, I believe a hundred percent in the, in the P D. Um, and I think it's just important to look at it. It doesn't mean anything's actually gonna change, but we're leaders, we have to lead, you know, even if it's leading by example to the county. You know, if, if we're trying to do our part, everybody tries to do their part, maybe they'll take a hint, so.
And even when it's politically difficult to do so, I think that's, that's the key. Cause it, it's a, it's a bomb. I mean, trying to tackle this issue is, is like picking up a bomb. And it's, it's, uh, it's tough, but I really feel like it needs to be done.
Mr. Becker, how much has the fire department budget gone up in the last two years?
Uh, fire department, this last year, they went up maybe, what, five percent, ten, five percent?
And how much the year before?
For that, about three. Fire district, fire district dues have not been going up a huge amount in my.
But you also gotta realize, you cover almost fifty percent of that fire district cost.
Oh, yeah, quite a.
You cover fifty percent of that fire district cost.
Certainly more than any other agency in that district.
And here's, here's the argument I have on that. They're not billing for calls. So they're not collecting that, that call. They can't bill for medical runs, which ninety percent of their runs that they have in I C A N are medical runs. They can't bill for them because Alina has that sewn up and they won't allow them to. Can you imagine if we can eliminate? Down to seven percent, what we'd end up paying for those runs? Cause we are billed per run.
So why can't we, why can't we look at that?
Can't. Try. I've been trying for eight years, Luke.
Okay, let's keep trying.
Eight years.
And that's a fire, that really is a fire board discussion. And it's really one, well, I mean, it's Alina holding it up, but it's also one, uh, entity of the.
But you do, you realize it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. I think it's over eight hundred thousand right now that we're paying to that fire district every single year. Everything that we do, everything that fire district does, just like them buying that building. Fifty percent is our cost.
How much are we paying, Mike? I thought that was like the total budget was like eight hundred some thousand for the fire department. But I, I mean, regardless, I mean, I don't know what that has to do with this discussion now, but.
No, I'm just saying, you, there's, you, you want to talk about cutting things, that's a huge chunk of budget money. That we have to put in every single year. And every year it goes up three to five percent.
Well, and then.
And we're not changing that.
Well, not right now. That's, it's hard to do everything at once. Like I said.
No, I know, but you.
You want to turn every rock over, every single piece.
Well, there's a rock, there's another rock to look at.
We'll get to that one.
You, but you, 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 you gotta realize, you cut that police funding, you're gonna lose residents faster than you can shake a stick at.
It's not what I'm saying is, I'm not talking about cutting the funding. I'm talking about taking a pause on the hiring and looking at it for a few weeks to see if we can be more efficient with what we have.
But if we wait two weeks, we lose the candidates we have, and then they're gonna turn around and say, don't go apply at I C A N E because they don't follow through with their word.
And they're gonna be more efficient once they get up to full staff.
When you're less, when you're short-staffed, you're not efficient. You're not.
No. Taking one person, you know, twice as long to do their job.
I, I just, I, I, I think you're, I understand exactly what you want to do. But I think changing that portion of that is, you know, dynamic is not gonna do any of us any favors. It's gonna make it worse. We want to start cutting some other things, then we gotta look at starting cutting some other things fundamentally that we do not need to spend money on. I understand that. But I think by attacking what you want to do, about putting that on pause, is gonna be more damaging than you'll ever understand. I don't, I don't think you want to kick that can right now. Because that can's gonna come back and bite you in the leg.
Three, in my opinion, three important pieces of the puzzle here that we shouldn't cut back on. Is police, fire, and public works. Cause all that has to do with the safety of our residents.
I think we gotta cut somewhere. I mean.
We already did.
Cut eleven percent.
You cut eleven percent, but how much do the house values go up? That eleven percent didn't actually make a practical difference in taxes.
That's, that's out of our control.
I know, it's county. It's always county.
No, it's not.
It's the value of your house.
That's process. That's, that's something you will never change. You and I will never, ever, ever see that. Your grandkids will never see that change. That's something that you'll never get changed. Never.
Not with that attitude.
Luke, it's been like that longer than you've been alive and ever been alive and your family's been around. It's been like that forever. You're not gonna change that due process. It will not change. And you'll be the first one to scream when your property value decreases to a point of half of what it's at right now. Yeah, you would. Because you, you got, you have half of the, any power that you had before. Any leveraging to borrow. Yeah, you would, because you, you got, you have half of, any power that you had before, any leveraging to borrow money, any of that. You, it's not, you don't wanna see your property value decrease, never. Because that's your investment for the rest of your life. I just, like I said, you'll, you'll never change that portion of it. You can argue with them on how your value was assessed at. You may get it, you may not get it, it's a fifty-fifty crap shoot.
I just think as leaders, we gotta do what we can, and that, just leave it at that.
So, I mean, Josie and Travis, I mean, if we were to take a, a, a short pause, I mean, I know we wanna tire as fast as possible if we're gonna do it, and I know we gotta cover positions, we can't have overtime, we don't want everybody to get burned out. And I know that it's, it's gonna be tough on those people that we've been interviewing, I, I understand that completely. And I know, I know how I would feel if I were in that position, you know what I mean? It's, it's not an easy, easy deal. But I mean, if we were to take a look at, you know, holding off for right now and seeing, you know, how can we run more efficient? Or is there possibilities where we can get by with less, or that kind of a thing? I mean, how much time do we need, I mean, can we do it, you know, in a month? I mean, or do we, can we do it in a couple weeks? Or can we, you know, when can we come back and, and look at the issue and, and actually have some hard numbers? I mean, can we have it ready for committee of the whole, you know, because I mean, it's, it's something that I think we do want it. If we're gonna do it, we gotta do it very quickly, you know, and I, I think it's, how much time do we need to, to spend on that? I mean, if it's, if it's something we are gonna look at. I guess committee of the whole is coming up pretty quick here this.
Next week.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Next week.
With the timing being off, yeah.
Like I said, we have the psychological scheduled for next week. So if you're gonna put it off a week or a year, it doesn't make any difference if you put it off. Once you put it off a week, we've just washed that process, so then we might as well wait months. You know, I don't, but that's gonna be the detriment to the safety of our people. Because we're gonna have trickle effect, I mean, we've only lost one so far because of this issue, or part of it because of this issue. We put it off at all, we're gonna lose what we're pushing to hire these candidates. And then we're just gonna keep going down that downward spiral. Like I said, we can look at all the staffing, but one thing that's different than, it'd be like, our, our business is our calls for service, right? That increases over time, increased over last year, it increased over the last five years. We are doing more, more with less, as far as if you look at percentages and what officers are actually doing, what they're taxed to do, what they're asked to do. So, but we don't have a stagnant workload from year to year. That workload has increased over those years, we need more residents, more calls for service, more need for police.
Yeah, I mean, and I know, I mean, some, I mean, and like I said, I mean, some of it maybe is just moving things around. I mean, that's the, that's the thing, I mean, we have all of these people that are working the same shifts, and I don't know, you know, as far as the lieutenant, if that's something that. It's just stuff that I wanna look at, I mean, because I know in the past, I think, I don't know when Gene was the chief, I mean, it's been years ago now, but the lieutenant worked in the evenings, I think, right, is that, I don't.
Chief Myers was the lieutenant.
Yeah, I worked nights, just, and ours does too, John works overnights.
Sometimes, okay.
Nights and days, depending on where the vacancies are, because he has so many hours to fill, so a lot of, he can move those around to cover vacancies without doing.
Given if you were fully staffed, he would be only the daytime, though.
No, like I said, we have vacations, we have sick, we have training, that's two to three to four hundred hours, hours per year. Primary focus is moving people around before we start paying overtime to cover those or leaving vacant.
Yeah, I mean, I just, all I'm asking for is to, to take a, a look at it, and I mean, how, how much time, you know, I mean, I know it.
Like I said, if, if you're gonna postpone, you might as well push it.
But I mean, if we're, if we're gonna do it, I mean, can we, can we have it done by the first meeting of February? You know, I mean, I know it's a council meeting, but.
If you do that, you lose those two applicants, then he's back to where he's been for the fourth time. Takes time, which is money, staffing time to line these interviews up, this is his fourth round. He had, he didn't pull anybody out of the la, what, the last three rounds?
Three, we pulled one, and then.
Like he said, all that hard work we've done, and he's done, and his officers, to get that police department where it is today compared to, say, where it was four, five years ago. Just, I think we just need to leave the police chief.
And the goal isn't to cut.
Do his job and keep doing it well like he has been, and not cut anything to make it that much more difficult and lose people.
The goal isn't to try to recoup the entire million dollars. I mean, that's, we're talking about an increase of a million dollars over a short period of time, a million dollars a year, every year. I mean, it's just every, if I was running a business, I would be pulling my hair out, saying, why, why am I paying so much more for this? And I would say, what can I do about this, because I'm, I'm getting killed here. And our taxpayers deserve us to, to take a look at every single thing, not just this thing, and that's, it's just the hardest one to start with, and that's why I wanted to get it out of the way first. But Josie, I mean, as far as a timeframe, and could we have something done like that by the first meeting of February, if, and we can discuss it at that time?
If I understand correctly, Mayor, I believe it's, it's looking at staffing, scheduling, and basically the roles. So if the question is, is can the lieutenant pull some day car or something like that, or another person, if it's a shared, at certain times of the day during a certain ti, days of the week? I would say yes, I think that's a conversation that the chief and I could have and put together models of different changes to a schedule to show what the difference is, and looking at, you mentioned, potentially looking at different hours of shifts, I would say yes. We could do that by the first meeting in February.
Because, I mean, I think if it, if it, if something we're gonna tackle, then it needs to be done really, really well, but it needs to be done really quickly. And it needs to be done carefully, obviously, but, and that gives us enough time, I think, to hopefully, to, to look into that a little deeper. I don't know, any other discussion at all? I mean, I don't know what, you know, if we just have a motion for, and I don't know what the language needs to be exactly for the motion, but I mean, if we had a motion to basically do what Josie had just mentioned, to look at, you know, staffing and roles, and what else did you say? I didn't write it down.
Schedule.
Scheduling.
Well, I'm not in favor of him stopping these officers and getting their background checks done and not hiring them, I'm not in favor of that.
I think that's, that's the issue, though, is if, if you hire, I mean, it's difficult to leave people off.
If we stop this right now, it's gonna be more detrimental damage than what you want.
I think I, I really appreciate what Jimmy's trying to do, but I think with the timeline, it might be better to trust Travis on this one. I mean, I'm all for cutting spending, but public safety is important.
I'm not against it at all either, but I just, I, I don't think that's the right place to.
I mean, you wanna cut something off of PD, you look at their office equipment, little things like that, you don't look at staffing or.
I, I think that.
The, the things that will take them off the streets, you don't wanna look at cutting those things.
I think between him and Josie, and maybe Josie meeting with the department heads, they could probably come up with some other things that we can start cutting some other funds on, that, but what he's got is on a, a very limited timeframe, and it's gonna end up costing us.
And it's already been approved.
Five years.
I mean, it's already been approved for, as far as for him to go ahead and do what he's doing now.
It's still good to talk about, so I'm happy we had to talk about it, and I think if you guys could cut something other than that, I think it'd be great.
I'll make a motion that we let Travis continue with what he's doing with these two officers, and then Ms. Wood has a department meeting to see whether there's other non-essential expenditures that can be cut.
I think that council member, Lynn Dean, I appreciate what that motion, part of that motion, but I think that's hard to define of what's non-essential, because I.
Well, I mean, I mean, if you like.
My, my interpretation of that is going to be different than Chief Myers', because I think you would say that everything he has in his budget is essential, which is why it's there.
Well, when I say non-essential, I think, Chief Myers, I think you know what I'm referring to.
I think if you.
Discretionary pieces that aren't.
Discretionary pieces, discretionary pieces.
I mean, guys, I think if we go that route, that's kinda missing the point. Eighty-seven percent of the budget is, is, is labor. I mean, and all I, and I'm not saying we can't ever hire those people, I mean, maybe we can, can we, is it possible to hire people on a contingency? Or, or Mike, maybe you can help me out with this too. I mean, if we hire people and then don't end up having just hours for them, I mean, how, how does that work? I mean, I'm okay with, if we wanna hire them and we don't lose them, but then we, I still would like us to have a look at our staffing plan and look at, you know, the roles that we're doing and the scheduling and who's working what hours. And, I mean, if we hire them, I just don't wanna make sure we have hours for them, is the only reason I'm wanting to say, let's slow it down. But, but I mean, if, if we don't have enough hours for them, I mean, what happens then? You know, I mean, that's.
I don't think that's, that's already been a proven issue, that he has the hours for them.
If we, if we continue.
Just think, if you hire a guy at twenty dollars an hour, and you hire another guy at fifteen dollars an hour, this guy, if you don't wanna hire him at fifteen, you got this guy at twenty, and he's gotta cover what this guy was gonna do, he is now thirty-five, not fifteen, thirty-five. So you've just increased that budget that much more by paying overtime hours. You're not saving, you're costing. I mean, you gotta look at it that way. When you gotta pay somebody overtime, you're paying time and a half for that person to work overtime. And if you go by some of the union rules, anything after eight hours is time and a half, and anything after ten is double time. So now you've just, you now, it's, it's costing you one and a half times more than it would've been if you would've hired that person.
Mike, I mean, if, that question to you, I mean, I kinda posed, I don't know if you, if you heard it or not, but, you know, I mean, how, how would that work? I mean, if we end up not having enough hours then to go around, you know, I mean, what's the?
To be honest, as the finance director, that's not really a matter I would get into, that's Josie, department heads, council, that's not.
It is laid out in the collective bargaining unit.
Sure.
Right, so it really does typically come down to, we have to look at exact language in the CBA, but.
Right.
For example, if council was to determine that on certain days that they didn't want the number of coverage of hours by two officers, they wanted it down to one. Typically, it's a layoff situation, that if we don't have work for somebody, they get laid off and it goes by seniority typically, you know? I don't know off the top of my head exactly the language in that contract, but there are parameters for changes.
And layoffs are, you know, not something you wanna have to do, so.
They're pretty ugly.
Uh, can we have public comment, I guess, on this, is it?
It is up to you, Mayor.
Okay.
Paul Burgley, one ten Northwest, Second Avenue. The one thing I haven't heard, and I don't feel this would be acceptable to you, Travis, but you're losing one officer, right? Did I hear you're losing one officer? We'll let him go through the two officer process and then put on a freeze, because you're still gonna be down that one officer.
No, I'll correct that, that, it's two, including the one who just left.
So we had one retire in October, that's a vacancy, and then the one that just left here on this agenda, so that's two vacancies from what we have. Yeah, we're not adding positions, we're just filling vacancies.
Oh, so you're just filling vacancies with these two?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Not adding.
I thought you were gonna be down one after these two.
No, just filling vacancies, not adding to the complement.
Okay, then that idea doesn't work, I thought maybe, I thought maybe you could.
I, I appreciate it anyway. I mean, I think that's, that's the key, I mean, I'm, I mean, if we could hire them now and then not have to go through a layoff process, that's fine. But I think if we don't, we're kinda defeating the purpose, there's not enough to cut if we just cut, you know, sites or things like that, you know what I mean? It's only, it's, the payroll is eighty-seven percent of that two million some odd dollars, you know, I mean, it's, and it's, I guess the, the big question for me too is, did I feel unsafe five years ago when we were spending a million dollars less? You know, I mean, that's the, and for me personally, I mean, I, I didn't feel any less unsafe or safer at that time, I guess. And so I think it's just, it's a million dollars, it's, it's, and like I said, it's a, it's a, you know, it's like picking up a bomb just trying to even look at it, because it's, it gets turned into this, you know, defund the police stuff, which if that was never even a thing, it would be a normal situation for a city council to discuss the budget items like police department. I mean, it's just, we need to cut everywhere, and I think this is the hardest one to start with. And I just, I really think that if we can just put a hold on it until, what's the, that first meeting of February is, uh.
February seventh.
February seventh? I just think it would be worthwhile to, to look at, I mean, if you, you know, if you, if you don't have to hire and you can be more efficient with the staff that you have, I just would really think it, it was, it'd be wise to take a look at it, but.
You can't be more efficient when you're short, you're less efficient. If you, if you got a store that bakes pies, and you're just super busy, if you cut down to one baker, are you gonna be more efficient, or is that baker gonna have to work twenty-four seven to keep up with half the orders?
And I know, I think it was.
It's not efficient.
I think it was the last city council meeting, or maybe the one before, where Travis laid out the hours and the amount of overtime at, that was at the current, or with full force, and we're still on overtime, is that correct? Or you, maybe is that, maybe you were down one and you were still doing overtime? So, I mean, to, to cut it, I think it's, it's really hard. I just remember that conversation, just because it was like, man, overtime is expensive, you know?
Absolutely, it is.
So it's.
And also, I, I also feel, knowing the understanding right now, he's replacing two officers that he's lost.
Right.
He's not having those two officers replaced and hiring two, two more.
That's what I was implying.
That's not even an argument then, at that point, he's not replacing anybody.
Right.
He's replacing what was lost, not gaining.
What I'm saying is, the hours of coverage have gone through the roof compared to what we used to do.
I think we can look, I think, for that point that you're talking right now, I totally get what you're saying. But you're diverting by telling him to still stop from hiring. I did motion for him to hire these two people to replace the officers that he already lost. I think then we can start addressing other issues. We can start looking at Travis, saying, can we look at an overlap, cutting back a couple hours here, a couple hours there? That I understand, and, I mean, that, that should be, I mean, like I said, I already motioned.
But what he's also said is that you can't look at that after the fact, because it's in the collective bargaining agreement. So we can't really take a look at that.
You can look at it, it lays it out on how.
On how, okay.
That's how, that's what it.
I mean, and. Can we look at it, though? I mean, that's the, and if you hire him and then you have to lay people off, I mean, that's a whole process too. I mean, I, all I'm asking for is, you know, February seventh, I mean, less than a month of time to, for staff to just take a look at it and see. I mean, is it something that we can be saving money on? I mean, it's, we're talking about a lot of money, a million dollars, I mean, it's just, I don't know.
My motion still stands.
Second. I've got a motion to, well, I don't know, do we really need a motion? I mean, that's already what we're doing.
Correct, I, I mean, that's already what we're doing, is.
But this was brought up as an agenda item.
If we're not making a change to what we're doing, do we need a motion?
We don't need a motion if we're moving, if we're just doing as we currently were doing, which is staffing vacant positions, which is what we typically have done. We would need a motion to do something different, for example, to temporary hold the positions from being filled until the February seventh meeting or thereafter.
I'm not for that either.
Well, I would, I would make that motion, that we wait until February seventh to make the hiring if we deem that we need to, and that in the meantime, we look at staffing, the roles, and the scheduling of the police department.
I mean, is there any way that you can go through with everything you're doing? And then, I guess, I, I don't know, I'm trying to find a happy medium.
Well, for example, though it's saying how it works, the, one of the candidates that we recruited, who works for another agency, who lives in town, that lives in the city, interviewed for us in another agency at the same, the same day, right? So we give a contingent offer based on psychological, medical, and the final council approval. So, I mean, you can understand what that person would do if we said, well, we'll let you know for sure.
Okay. I mean, I guess, I would, I would make a motion to continue the hiring, hiring process with maybe looking at the schedule later, like Jimmy was saying, because, I mean, if there is inefficiencies where you can cut off a couple hours here and there, I think that'd be good to look at. But as far as not hiring, I think that's really tough, just because we don't wanna have less police than what we have now, is basically what would happen. And to lose a potentially good police officer is kind of a, a big hit nowadays. But I really do appreciate what Jimmy's trying to do, and I think if there's a way that we can look at it and see if there's any, any, we can limit hours of any kind, that, that would be my motion.
We have, we have two spots open right now, right? And you have one person ready to hire, or you have two ready to hire?
Potentially two, one that's going through, maybe we have the other one that.
So you have one that's further along in the process.
Yeah, and the other one in the process.
How far, how far back is that other one in the process?
Probably about a week.
So, I mean, if we wait, I mean, let's say if we hire, so can we maybe split the baby and say, let's do one and then wait on the second one? I mean, does that help you out at all? I mean, I.
Doesn't. Trying to think if, we could push one through council, has to, on approval next Tuesday, that one has to go through.
Because we can't really, yeah, right, because we won't be ready to hire until that council meeting on the seventh anyway, right? So, I mean.
Well, we don't do anything, and I, I probably won't have everything, everything ready for the second one till the council in February anyway. So we only have, I mean, you have to approve the one next council meeting, right? You'll have one to approve, so without. So without actually doing anything or making a motion, you'll have that, if that makes sense. We're not gonna have the other one ready to push through till the first one in February.
So the, so the second one, so I mean, if we wanted to kinda split the baby, we could say, and it does instruct you to look at staffing, roles, and scheduling. You know, move forward with the hiring that you have going for the next.
Please, I don't think you even say that, cause we're not gonna bring it to council. And if we did, you could discuss that next week. We won't bring it till the next one.
Well. I thought you said the first one that you're having.
First one will be Monday or fall, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, right.
And the other one will be till the one in February.
At the February is, the mayor is saying is at the February meetings where we bring the analysis of what different coverage would look like or different.
So let's say, let's say we move forward with hiring the one, hold on, you know.
But we need to keep the process going.
Yeah, keep the process going in the event that we. We wanna hire that person, but in the meantime, look at the staffing, the roles, and the scheduling. So we we still get, so that kind of, everybody kinda gets something that they want and and something they don't want.
As long as we can keep the process moving, cause we won't be having anything ready for that second one till that council meeting anyway.
I'd second that motion.
We don't have to make a motion, cause that's what's already.
Well, we do, we'd need a motion to look into staffing roles and scheduling.
To look into the staffing. That's originally my motion.
I would say that if we, if if we don't, if we have disagreement on council on what staff should spend their time on. Then I say that it is good to have a motion and go through the process to vote on it, because this will take a considerable amount of time for myself and the chief to go through and then directs us both to ensure that we get that done by the seventh. So I think that it is a good idea.
So I would, I would make a motion that staff spends time looking at PD's staffing, the roles, the scheduling, and comes back to us on February seventh. With some options or or potentially things staying the same, I mean, just just that we'd like to have more information.
For the second hire.
Well, for the seventh is my motion, but yeah, so basically, we wouldn't have the second hire made before that, because they wouldn't be ready in time.
Yeah, but hiring the first one now going forward with the.
We're not talking about hiring or the hiring process at all. The only motion is to look into staffing and the roles and scheduling, and then we'll still end up hiring that one. You know, if it's approved on the next meeting, right, next week, and then we still won't have the second one hired, though, until the seventh, so.
As long as I know we're still moving forward with the one for sure.
We're still moving forward, yeah, so we're still moving forward, so we get the officers that we have that are ready to go now will be in. And then we still have a chance to look at staffing and roles and scheduling before we make the second hire. I mean, that's kinda a pretty good compromise, don't you? I mean, it's.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion from Mayor Gordon and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Travis, for everything that you do too. I mean, I really want you to know it's. It's very, very important what you guys do, and I appreciate it a lot. I mean. And I hate to, I hate to pick on you, cause I know it's. It's it's tough, and and it's not anything that you're doing wrong or anything like that. You're doing an awesome job, and, you know, it's. It's just, I, and you're doing exactly what council's instructed you to do, so I mean, I I think you're doing great, but. All right, well, thank you, guys. Let's see, next order of business is case six, a resolution approving the partnership agreement between the City of Isanty and the East Central Regional Library.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we do have a request from the East Central Regional Library to extend, as this is reviewed on annually, as a partnership that we have, that they do the library link here within City Hall. I have some information that they've shared with us. They're not able to present this evening. So for their twenty twenty-two recap, annual service hours, um, four hours per visit was two hundred and sixteen. The annual service days was fifty-four. They're only open one, one day per week. Reference information questions answered was six hundred and fifty-nine. Materials borrowed were one thousand six hundred and fifty-six. And they had one thousand four hundred and twenty-six visits. Uh, they said that the twenty twenty-two summary discover program event, Bruce the Bug Guy, was extremely popular, and they had forty-six attendees of all ages. Uh, the outreach stop here, library link, is all about intergovernmental partnerships. The library funded by the state, and Isanty County provides the services. And the city provides the space, and the community in the form of volunteer friends group provides additional support. Um, their agreement has been the same as it's been for numerous years. Um, one thing that is not included in there, and it's something that council could decide if they do wanna include, is if they wanted there to be the option of. Changing the term, so it wasn't a full year look at a time. Typically, in our contracts and agreements, there is, um, I might hate to say out clause, but it's kind of that where it does allow there to be some discretion if there's a change with notice. This one doesn't have that, um, except for when it's looked at annually, so if that's something that council wants to consider, we could share that feedback to the library.
Like once every two years and stuff every year, kinda thing?
Uh, no, if we wanted to be shorter, or it could be longer, I suppose. This is specifically written to be reviewed. Um, for extension or termination once per year annually.
I'd make a motion and we give them a two-year contract agreement with an out clause. That if, with sufficient notification of cancellation.
I. Mentioned something here, though. So staff is, and I've talked about this a little bit, that. The reason that we may wanna use that space is, you know, they've got meetings where they meet with different people from outside the city, so they've got developers or business owners or. You know, residents coming in, and right now, if they invite them to come in and meet, they're having to meet in city offices, I mean, through the security doors and everything like that, so I mean, there there may become a time in the future where we want to have that space.
Why can't they meet here, in here?
This is all empty.
This is all empty at that time?
Well, it's just more of a, I don't know, I mean, I guess that's a good question. I mean, it's more of a private. You know, if you're looking to try to just have a meeting room set up where you've got it, I mean, you've got space.